Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regular meeting, the first one of April. I hope there was no property damage or loss of anything today when the seventy mile an hour winds came through. Cleaned off the pollen. Cleaned down the trees. Took down some of them. But nonetheless, it was a pretty heavy storm that came through. And if you're allergic to pollen like I am, you're really welcome to. It was like, well, I need to get some of this pollen out, so that's what happened today. We welcome you, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation by Reverend Tim Davis, Pledge of Allegiance. Kelly Milligan. Uh, Kelly Milligan. Oh, yeah. Prayer first. And the prayer.
Let us pray. We thank you for another great day today in the name of Jesus. We thank you for the comfort that you give us in times of loss. We thank you for the directions and the guidance here in this meeting here tonight, Lord, and that all things will be done in order and in decency, Lord. We thank you, praise you for just your comfort, your guidance, your directions and all things. Lord, most of all, we thank you for Son of Jesus Christ, and we thank you for just your goodness and your mercy, and one day at a time by the grace of God. In the name of Jesus, we do pray, amen and amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please proceed. And thank you. Kelly, thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Mayor, to old business, I would like to add item A, consideration and approval to amend the bylaws of the Homeless Advisory Committee and the Cultural Arts Committee. And item B, appointment of Christopher Craig to the Homeless Advisory Committee. I would also like to add two close sessions. One of those is the close session pursuant to NCGS 1433181186 to discuss personnel matters and a close session pursuant to NCGS 1433181185 to establish or instruct the public body staff or negotiate agents concerning the position to be taken considering the acquisition of real property.
Could we also go into close session on attorney-client privilege and personnel?
Yes, and a close session pursuant to NCGS 1433181183 to consult with the attorney on matters within the attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
And personnel.
And personnel.
That'll be at the end. Close session will be... Will become item eight. Right, Ashley? Yes. Let's say, under new business, we've got to add an item A and an item B. That's under six, old business. Six A, six B, and then eight will become a close session for property acquisition and for personnel.
Motion to adjourn with changes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Saying not opposed, motion carries. Manager's report. Answer.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, Mayor Porten, Board of Commissioners. First page of the community of the manager's report is definitely the community corner. We have quite a few events on this week, April ninth. We have a groundbreaking ceremony that we've all been invited to for the Hive at Hope Mills. So one of a kind of food truck park and community center. And we've been invited to come out at twelve PM at thirty-four fourteen Bullet Street. Also, on April ninth, from five PM to eight PM in support of the Hope Mills Police Foundation. We'd like for you to go to the Hope Mills Zack's fees between those three hours for thirty fifteen Main Street. A portion of the proceeds will go towards the Hope Mills Police Foundation. We also have the Ed Herring Park Cookout set for May seventeenth. That's a really cool idea we came up with at the last Parks and Rec community committee meeting. And we're doing this to try to drum up more excitement about the proposed plan in the park with the community. The same day on the seventeenth, we have the Police Foundation Ball. Saturday, May seventeenth, from seven PM to eleven PM. This will be at the Shrine Club at forty-four sixty-one Camera Road. We have the One People Reggae Arts Festival on May thirty-first. Juneteenth registration is now open. That's set for the weekend of the thirteenth and fourteenth of June. You have also the Fishing Berry on the seventh of June at Hope Mills Lake from eight AM to two PM. Second and third pages of the manager's report outline a significant amount of additional spring assembly events held by Parks and Rec. The fourth page is the Hope Mills Chamber of Commerce. I want to definitely acknowledge our Commissioner Skarola for a successful Women Need Business event. It was very, very powerful. The next chamber luncheon is this week, Wednesday, April ninth, from at eleven-thirty AM at the VFW off Davis Street. The Hope Mills Chamber Golf Tournament is set for May twenty-second at Gates Four. We have an Easter Egg Hunt on April thirteenth at Heritage Park. And the final two dates, I have updated several of the STIP projects from NCBLT on the final two pages of the manager's report for construction activities. We're still waiting for a start date specifically on the widening of Goff U and Rockfish Road. That is Project U forty-seven oh nine. But that is the contractor has been selected as Fred Smith and Company. As that project starts, we'll continue to get more detailed updates for this project as it proceeds forward. And that concludes the manager's report. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. Before I get to the board of comments, I want to recognize our Cumberland County Board of Commissioners Chairman Kirk Deviary is with us tonight. He's right back in the back there. Okay, let's start off with... Commissioner Martin, I'll just start from that end and work down.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Schwellen.
It's good to see everyone here. I know I'm excited for Easter, maybe Easter festivities this weekend with the Cotton Tail Trail. Who's gonna take pictures with Easter? There we go, okay. That's fine.
Thank you. Commissioner Lay.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also thank everyone for coming out this evening. It's always good to see Parks in full house. If we can't have a full house, we're doing better than we used to. I want to thank the town staff, especially Parks and Recreation, for their event this past weekend. Opening Day, baseball, softball across the street. If you weren't there, if you didn't drive by, you're not gonna believe it. You can ask Keith Dolinger, his hands are full. So, again, I want to thank everyone who had a part in that. I think it's great for youth. It's not every day that you have a crowd like that at Hope Mills. You may see some later this year at the municipal park back here. But to see a bunch of little kids running around, decorated up in their professional attire, it did my heart good. Because I spent many, many years when they were like twenty-seven. That's a lot of time to put in with kids with that. It can only save one. It's a success. So, again, I want to thank everyone. Everyone. And we had most of our board here in attendance. Ms. Freiber was on the six side of the bed when the arm went off, she rolled her way and got on the six side. Mr. Mayor, I thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Lay, Commissioner Freiber.
Yeah, I'm sorry I missed Saturday, but I was in bed for fifteen days with the flu, and the doctor arrived too. Ended up in the hospital, but I'm out now. And hopefully I'm gonna regain my strength. I only have a few things that has been brought to my attention. Over on River Road, at the end where it runs into Legion Road, years ago, that was blocked off. I'm not sure it was ever done legally or not. I understand that former police chief John Hodges did it to cut people from cutting through there. Well, now I've noticed that given a football field link, it's blocked off at the other, not at the other end, but about a football field. Now, who blocked that street off because it's a town-owned street?
So, I have staff looking back, but if it's the project or the area I think you're talking about, that is probably tied to a recent subdivision and a purchase. And I think that portion of River Road is abandoned, but I will have staff look into that.
It would be nice if it wasn't done correctly, that we opened that street up so that people can get through to Legion Road from Main Street and might could help with some of the congestion on Main Street.
If my research is correct, that would be considered private property now. If you recall, there's a member of the public that purchased it, they were talking about putting greenhouses on this property. That's the area that that subdivision is in, and if I'm correct, that area is abandoned. That may be considered private property, but I'll do some research and follow up accordingly.
How could it be considered abandoned if it's a town-owned street? And none of us knew about it to...
From my understanding, that road has been abandoned for decades, that portion of it. And so, if that is correct, then it probably became private property with the purchase. But again, I'll research that further.
Okay. And the cemetery that's on that piece of property, are the owners that bought that property, are they responsible to maintain that cemetery?
That cemetery has an easement around it. I do know that the person that purchased that property is aware of that. I'll follow up as well to see what kind of coordination that he has with me, but I know he's totally aware.
Because I rode by there several times, and one time I rode by there, one of the headstones was knocked over. And the other day, I noticed two more had been knocked over. And, I mean, I think we ought to show some reverence to that cemetery and look after it because, you know, there are people that used to be sitting there very fast away. And also, I've been asked, when is the lake gonna be tested for fecal matter?
And that's something I have to follow up with Stormwater. I think that they have a period of time each year, but I'm not sure if that period of time is of essence now. But I'll find out when they're testing, schedule it.
Because there are all people and children swimming there with all the geese and all that's around there in the water. It might be a good idea to go ahead and help them do. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Freiber, Mayor Porten, Dr. Kenon McCray.
My remarks are short, it's great to see everybody, and I enjoyed opening day this past Saturday as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Porten, Dr. McCray. If you really wanted to see the backbone and the culture of Hope Mills, you had the opportunity to see it Saturday morning at about nine o'clock, when there was about two thousand people out here on this ball field. It was amazing to see the families, the players that were out and being a part of that celebration. And it's been a long tradition of Hope Mills for years and years and years. And a lot of championship teams started on that field. A lot of careers and pathways started on that field, on all those fields that were out there. It was amazing with the turnout and the comments and the thank yous from folks that wanted to render the thanks to those responsible for making that happen. And those would be the members of Parks and Rec and our police department because both of those and our first responders from the fire department. It was a collective effort to make sure that safety was paramount, that everybody got across that street, and everybody was part of the celebration. And it was really, really, really great. And Kelly Milligan, who is with us now, Miss North Carolina Senior Elementary, she sang the National Anthem. And she opened up tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then she's got a little speech that she wants to share with us. So it kind of wanted to highlight the presence of setting up in the city. Last week, a number of us went to the, we attended the Mid-Carolina Regional Council. Meeting was at Methodist College, University now. And it was really a well-attended conference about building partnerships to continue communities and improve lives. And they do so much for all the municipalities, not only in Cumberland County, but in the Mid-Carolina Regional Council. I just wanted to highlight that. This morning, another big, well-attended event was the groundbreaking, this from here, for the Cape Fear Regional Theater. Now, that was really something because it started at noon. You had a lot of wind, didn't know about the rain. But nonetheless, the wind stayed, the rain didn't. It didn't come, and it was very, very, very well-attended. And if you haven't been there to any of their shows, and they've got one that's running now that's extended to April nineteenth. It's called Steel Magnolias. It's a theater that is well worth going to see. And the ground break is going to extend the building with a lot of community support. But just look at the turnout that was there today. And I mean, not only from the City of Fayetteville, but across Cumberland County to include our legislative delegation was present. Cumberland County Commissioners, including Chairman Kirk Deviary was there. Mayor Mitch Cohen, City of Fayetteville, along with City Council. And so, so many people who believe in the theater. So I just wanted to highlight that. Also, on Saturday, we rolled out twenty-twenty-five Community Engagement Survey, which has been published and now out for print from our strategic comprehensive consultant, Ashley Anderson, who constructed this. It will be online, I believe Chancellor, right, this week? It will be available online this week, that's true. There's a bunch of these that are on that back table. We got about fifty or sixty of them on Saturday during the games. And what we're looking for is exactly what it says. Community engagement. You don't have to put your name on it. There's no place for an address. It's just your thoughts about our community today and where it goes in the future. That's what it's about. And it's part of our strategic plan that we're putting together to look at the vision for Hope Mills. So I want to share this with everybody that's either in the audience or watching live stream. Is that we want your thoughts, we want your comments going forward. Lastly, in the reminders tonight, I had scheduled on Thursday, April tenth, Let's Talk It Out, an evening with Mayor Bellflowers over in the Parks and Rec Center. Just me, a stool, and a mic. That's what I had planned for this Thursday night. Just Talk It Out. Much, much like the chairman's chat that he's got going now after his meetings. I'm gonna move it later on into April because I had a family event that occurred this past week that concerned a great deal of my attention. Okay. And I thank the commissioners who were supportive. I thank the community for their support as well. I lost my mother a week ago. And so I'm gonna move that off, and I'll reschedule that later on. But I think it's important for a lot of the community folks to come forward, especially now that we're in budget season. And we're trying to plan the future and the vision of our community. And I emphasize "our" because it is ours. And everyone in this community has a voice. So that must be purpose behind it. That's all I have, we'll go into presentations. We left off, our last meeting, we left off a firefighter promotion, Aaron Taylor Wood, is he here? All right. I'll come down and we'll do the promotion. Gonna come get it, Aaron. You gotta be convinced, you gotta come out in the middle here, so keep doing that. All right, STIP's get up promotion. This certificate is proudly presented to Aaron Taylor Wood. Given the seventh day of April twenty-twenty-five, this certificate is a recognition of your outstanding performance and dedication, you are hereby promoted to the position of... Signed, Matthew King Fire Chief, signed channel manager, Chancellor of Block. Okay. I think it's time for a speech. I think it's time for a speech. Come on, Kelly, come on. But before you start, you brought some folks with you. Now, here's the deal. This can go one or two ways. You can introduce them, or I can. Which one do you want? It could go either way. You pick one. You want to introduce them, or you want me to do it? Think it starts with your mama? Okay, I'll start with your mom. Start with your dad. Joseph Britley Milligan are proud parents of Kelly. Britley works with me and Dr. McCray at FTCC. She has two sisters. You want to introduce them? There you go. Now you got them out. Now you got two other folks back there.
My girl, and that's my sister.
Okay, and are their names Wally and Debbie Tenzell? Okay, all right, we're good. We got them. Go ahead.
My name is Kelly Milligan, and I am a fifth grader at Great Stick Elementary School in Miss North Carolina Senior Elementary of America. Today, I want to talk to you about two amazing things. Brave and Kelly's Reading Club. Brave stands for building respect and values for everyone. That means treating others with kindness, making good choices, and standing up for what's right. It's more than just a word, it's a way of life. Being brave means being kind even when no one is watching. It means speaking up when something isn't fair, and it means treating everyone with respect, no matter how different we are from them. Sometimes, being brave is better than just being a good friend, a good listener, or even believing in yourself when things fail. But here's something really cool. Books can help us do all of that. Think about the last great book you read. Maybe it had a character who was kind, who stood up for a friend, or who made a tough but good decision. Stories teach us about respect, courage, and doing the right thing even when it's hard. That's what makes Kelly's Reading Club so special. Not only do we read for fun, but also to grow, learn it, and become best versions of ourselves. Reading sparks your creativity, boosts your confidence, and lets you go on amazing adventures without leaving your room. Whether you're traveling through space, exploring magical lands, or solving mysteries, books help your imagination soar and helps you believe in yourself along the way. And the best part, books can help us learn how to be brave too. When we learn about characters who stand up for each other, or use kindness, or who face challenges with courage, we start to see how we can do the same. Every story is a chance to practice bravery in our hearts and minds. So when the real moment comes, we're ready. Every book we open gives us a new lesson on how to be better friends, better leaders, and better people. So here's my challenge for all of us. Find a book with a character who inspires you, think about what they teach you about being brave, and then go out and live it. Be kind, be respectful, and stand up for what's right. Because when we read, we learn, and when we learn, we can change the world. The world needs more people who are brave, and that starts with us. Thank you so much for this opportunity to share my passion for reading and the brave message with you today. I'm so grateful for your support in helping inspire kindness, courage, and the love of reading in our community. Thank you.
Kelly, there's one other thing that I want to share. That towel you hold and that chair you wear, that's a reflection of you. It's also a reflection of your sisters, of your parents, and your grandparents. So thank them because it's a reflection of them. And we thank you for your kind speech. Faith, that's gonna be tough, you to follow this. I mean, but please come forward with a presentation. Prevention and Volunteer Coordinator for Child Advocacy Center, that's under tab two.
Good evening. My name is Faith Famer, and I am the Prevention and Volunteer Coordinator at the Child Advocacy Center. I've been there just over sixteen years and have been out here several times. And the things I'm most proud about Hope Mills is that you all received the Partner in Prevention seal about two years ago, maybe three years ago, I think. And so that is something that has been special to me in my role and what I do, so thank you for doing that. So a little bit about the Child Advocacy Center. Couple of things, we are a place of healing and hope. That's our tagline when you see our logo that's in there. Because the children that come to us, that's what we want for them to have is healing and hope. They come broken, they come with trauma, and we want them to begin to receive help, and then from that help, they can heal, and then they can have hope. The purpose at the CAC is for us to alleviate the trauma children experience when the disclosure of sexual abuse or serious physical abuse occurs by creating a community of collaborating advocates. And so we have that here with Hope Mills. We have law enforcement that come to our center to conduct those forensic interviews, or they don't conduct them, they observe them when our folks doing the... And they come to case review, and are a big piece of that. So we're grateful for that. Our vision is a community where children live in safe and nurturing environments, free from sexual and physical abuse. And one of the ways that we see that displayed is during the month of April with the pinheads. And I have a little treat in my bag, I'm gonna bring around and give to you guys in a moment. And our mission is to, is that we collaborate with community partners to respond to and prevent child abuse. I'm not gonna read this to you, I'll just leave it there for a moment for you to reflect, but just a couple of highlights. but just a couple of highlights. Last fiscal year that ended on June 30th, we had 722 referrals. Out of that, a little over 500 actually came in for a forensic interviewer, interview. And we only interview children that are a little bit older than three, not too often the three-year-olds, up to seventeen. And the average age is between seven and nine. And then I've already said that April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And if you drive around town, and that's a custom as I was driving here tonight, you may see the blue pinwheels. If you've not got your pinwheels yet for your yard or for your business, we have some still available. The manager was talking to me earlier about possibly you all doing a pinwheel planning out here, so we look forward to that as a possibility. And then there's just a nice picture of some pinwheels from years past, but they are popping up all over our town. And then finally, this picture is a child that was there for an interview several years ago, probably ten or more years ago. And as you can tell, it was around Thanksgiving because there's a turkey on the, on the drawing, and they wrote, "I love this place." "We want all children to live in a stable, loving, and stimulating environment at home, at school, at church, at the ballpark, wherever, in the community." There's my information. Love to talk with anybody if they have questions, if you're interested in getting trained for your staff, your agency, anyone that's listening, or you have someone in mind, I'll be glad to do that. And if it's okay, I'll just walk around and give you the little treats that I have, okay?
Chancellor, are we still going to do something this year like we did in the past year?
We picked our pinwheels up last week, we set the date down.
There we go. Faith, before you go, I've got a proclamation to raise and present to you. National Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is on the agenda under Item D, Tab Three. Whereas an estimated 700,000 children are victims of abuse and neglect every year. And whereas Child Abuse Prevention Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that child abuse is widespread and has strong implications throughout the United States. And whereas we believe that our children are to be valued as the future of our community and nation, and that we should prioritize their safety. And whereas social and economic emergencies increase the risk for child abuse and neglect due to the increased stressors. And whereas child abuse prevention is the community responsible and providing solutions depending on involvement among all people, we must work together to educate our community about what is done to prevent child abuse and how to support survivors and their families. And whereas the victory over child abuse and neglect will not be achieved without the support of the entire community and recognition of the importance of raising awareness. To decrease incidents of abuse and to support child abuse victims and their families, and whereas each April, the town of Hope Mills and other supporters of the child advocacy community ask the public to join in outreach efforts to reduce and prevent child abuse. Now, therefore, I, Jesse Bellflower, as Mayor, and the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 2025 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in the Town of Hope Mills' seventh day of April 2025. All right, Scott, I think you're up next. Scott, before you start, what was your takeaway on Kinley's little speech?
I would, I would love to take her around town with me, that'd be awesome. She'd make my job a lot easier, I will tell you that. The timing couldn't have been better. Did you plan that?
Nope, I did not. I did not plan. We didn't work this together. It came together.
This came together. Well, it, it is incredible and good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is Scott Embry and I have the privilege of serving as the Executive Director of Your United Way. I appreciate the opportunity to share a brief, but exciting update on a powerful, community-wide initiative we're working on together. I think everyone in this room would agree that poverty rates are too high and literacy rates are too low in Cumberland County. And those two statistics are deeply connected. Economic prosperity begins with literacy. The young lady was exactly right because we all know that readers are leaders. That's why I'm thrilled to announce a groundbreaking collaboration. A coalition of leaders from education, city and county government, Fort Bragg, the library system, and nonprofit organizations are coming together to tackle this issue head-on. And I'm happy to introduce the Cumberland County Literacy Council. You would think a county our size would have a literacy council, but before, four months ago, it was not in existence. Our mission is simple. We foster literacy and learning across generations by meeting families right where they are, embracing their diverse needs. Through meaningful partnerships, we create opportunities to transform lives and strengthen our community. The United Way is very proud. Let me first show you the groups of companies and organizations and communities that are taking ownership in our literacy problem. And I will tell you, it is a problem. Mayor Mitch Colvin said it probably best when I shared this information with him, that literacy is an economic issue. It's, it is something that we all need to work on if we wanna see Cumberland County be the best version of itself in the future. So these organizations have come together and they have taken direct ownership in the literacy challenges faced in our community. And I'm excited about where we are headed. The United Way is proud to lead by example. We manage the Dolly Parton Imagination Library for Cumberland County. And in 2024, we did something that has not ever been done here before. Through partnership with K3 Valley Health and Womack Army Medical Center, we now send every newborn home with their first Dolly Parton Imagination Library book and access to the program that would allow them to continue to get a book free of charge that is age-appropriate from ages zero to five, delivered right to their home every month. So it's incredible to think about Cumberland County now covers 100% of the children born here. And what is even more amazing, I haven't been able to find another county in all of North Carolina that's doing the same thing. In March, we took another big step and we launched the new Imagination Library Storytime on Saturday mornings at our public libraries. It has, it has already taken off and thanks to the city of Fayetteville, families now can ride the transit system free of charge to ten storytimes on Saturday mornings. So more programs are in the works and that's ultimately why I'm here to talk to you tonight. We're excited about where we've come from, but we're more excited about where we're going. But in order to expand our reach, we need to build capacity. That's why we're launching a new initiative to recruit and train a team of literacy ambassadors, people, of community volunteers and advocates that will help us spread the message, engage with families across our neighborhoods. Together, we can turn the page for Cumberland County, and I believe this is only the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. I think you, you have an ambassador tonight, Kinley Milligan from Grace Creek who spoke up. He's definitely an ambassador in the city of Fayetteville. Mayor Mitch Colvin said he did say it right. No doubt in my mind, it is an economic situation for the entire county. But you know what? It goes to show how positive our county is by partnerships, by working together, collaboration, not only with the city, but with the municipalities and with Cumberland County Board of Commissioners as well. This is a big project and we're glad that you're doing it because the kids, the kids are the ones that need it and they're the ones that's gonna receive the best help from it.
They're the next generation of leaders. And you know, the reality is that a lot of the partners that we're with, one of the ladies that is a part of the Chair Committee of this, is that FTCC, Mary Berizio, I believe I said that right, had been a librarian for many years at county level, running the Cumberland County Library System. She said, "Scott, this is like a dream come true." Because when we build out ambassadors, just so you're aware, we're not looking for just volunteers. We're working on a curriculum that requires our ambassadors to be at the level that they could be used at in the school system, they could be used at any education facility, they would be able to walk in at the library system, take on the role of a reader or a coach, and immediately get to work. So that is where we are now. That's what we need to do is to spread that knowledge and as we begin, we're getting close to recruiting. We're working on our process now, probably within the next two to three weeks, there will be some official communication where we begin soliciting those ambassadors to take them through the certification process. So we will have the most dynamic group of literacy advocates in Cumberland County that will allow us to not only reinforce some of the initiatives that are already working where they just don't have enough manpower, but our, our goal long-term is to stand up new initiatives that give this next generation a fair shot. With third graders in Cumberland County reading in at 50% of what they're expected to at third grade, we can do better than that. We can do better than that and we're committed to do it and we've got the right organization and we're super excited to have the Town of Hope Mills on board with us.
We're excited to be partner. I know Mary and Dr. McCray knows Mary as well. She holds the title of librarian, but she is much, much more than that title she holds. She is such a caring person about our community. She truly, truly is, from the heart.
Is there an age limit on your literacy ambassadors?
We, we want to have them adults, college-age kids, so there will be some college-age kids, both FSU, FTCC, and Methodist University will be, will open it up to their education students.
So maybe not as, and this is something that I don't know if you consider, maybe not as official literacy ambassadors, but would you all consider having teams, I don't know if it's once a month, from an organization to volunteer? Could maybe teams, if that's the age, if that's age-appropriate, but if in some way that we can collaborate that way, I would like to.
That is certainly on the table, even as, as the elementary school she talked about is because we need to be following the examples. What we're working on, the ambassadors right out of the gate are people that are certified and able to go into any literacy program and, and participate without, you know, background check, it's ready-to-read training. I mean, all of those things will have to happen, but, but we have already heard that there is a need for children to lead other children and, 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 you know, just like the young lady here, there are some superstars in this community that we would love to leverage in the future.
Thank you. Well, I would think that Kinley's mother would definitely be an ambassador. I'm pretty sure. And you would get Kinley as well. As a family. Before you go, Scott, you asked me the last time that we talked about to write you a letter. We're gonna do something a little bit better. We're gonna create a proclamation and then I'm gonna present it to you. A proclamation recognizing United Way of Cumberland County Literacy Council Day in the Town of Hope Mills. Whereas the United Way of Cumberland County believes that literacy is fundamental in all we do and essential to meeting one's full potential, and whereas the partnership between the United Way of Cumberland County and the Cumberland County Literacy Council demonstrates community organizations working together in order to shape a better future, and whereas the Town of Hope Mills supports the work it takes to close any gaps in literacy, particularly among the youth within our community, and whereas improved literacy skills promote a better well-being within individuals and families, which in turn also improves quality of life. And whereas the Town of Hope Mills looks forward to the expansion of programs like the Library Storytime and Literacy Volunteer Network. So now, therefore I, Jesse Bellflower, as Mayor, and the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April 7, 2025, as United Way of Cumberland County Literacy Council Day in the Town of Hope Mills, signed this seventh day of April 25.
Man, thank you so much. What, what a way to celebrate all this work.
Thank you. Appreciate it so much.
We'll keep you updated. I promise you, good things are coming.
Okay, all right. Public comments is next. We have one speaker, Walter Sauger. Before he speaks, sir, I'm gonna read something. Public comments, each speaker, former Michael. Each speaker is required to state their name and address if you want to. To limit comments to less than three minutes and the total comment period will be thirty minutes or less, speakers should avoid repetition. Groups should designate its spokesperson, citizenship, have signed up, which you did. And please direct comments to the full board and not to an individual member or staff member. Although the board is interested in hearing your concerns, speakers should not expect board action or deliberation on subject matter brought up during the public comment segment. Topics requiring further investigation will be referred to, to the appropriate county town officials and/or staff and may be scheduled for a future agenda item. Okay, sir, welcome.
Thank you, sir. And good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the board. I come to you today to ask, to talk about the DMV facility, it being, since it's been so small, and I'm looking at also the population growth. We're looking at from 2010, we were sitting at about a little bit over 15,000 and now as of probably 2024, looking at over 18,000 people here in the town. For example, I, I went there a couple of weeks ago and I was there for, I sat there for about an hour, for one. And then also, there were like about three to four employees at the time that were there available and I think because of the time that I went in, they were doing lunchtime as well. But I think to better serve the community, I believe that they probably need to go ahead, for one, hire at least about two to three more employees to go ahead and serve the public. And then also, number two, we also need to look at, I was told that we're looking at another 2,500 homes being built here in the area. So again, we have to go ahead and take a look at that and where it's not going to go ahead and be efficient enough for the town if we keep it at the current status that it's currently in right now. So again, I just ask that if possible, go ahead and take a look at a bigger facility for the community, to serve the community with more employees, and then also probably even to alleviate some effort from Fayetteville to even put in for as people go ahead and renew their licenses as well and even getting their licenses because again, we also have the high schools in the area. So sir, and that's all I have for this time. Thank y'all.
Walter, we thank you very much for your comments. Thank you for coming. Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Scholz.
Is, is there a way we can reach out to the North Carolina DMV? I know because they're contracted workers and that we're the state, is there anything we can do to reach out to them? I know because they're contracted workers and that through the state, is there anything we can do to reach out to them or?
I'll look out to see what their methodology is because the one here is just for tags. So I'll look into it. It's almost similar to.
If I could add something as well, and I'm aware that they're also doing it.
Gotta do it for Mike, gotta do it for Mike Walter.
Uh, so and I'm fully aware that they're also in the middle of an audit. But again, it's, uh, pending whatever they come out with. But again, what we know is because we're here in the, uh, community is how we better, you know, what their input is and then what we have to say as well. And again, that's why I come to the board to say, if you can, uh, go to our state reps or somebody to say, hey, this is a problem. And with also with us looking at pending people coming in, uh, moving here because of the target that's coming and along with, uh, hobbits as well, people coming in, let's say from Fayetteville getting a bigger house um, and moving here because of work purposes as well.
Thank you, Walter.
Yes, sir.
So not better today than it was before they moved when they were down in Carle C's in that little, that little office down there. Cause I remember years ago, probably many of us do, of how long those lines were then.
From what I would look into, similar to, uh, us engaging in one of the elections, I'm pretty sure there's some methodology and formula into the where they choose locations. But I will let them know about, um, the increase in our population and define, uh, what, what we need to do if we did want to request an official location here. Cause like I said before, the only location we have across the street is just for tags. We don't have an official location. I think the closest one is off of the last street. Um, and so I'll look into if they feel that's adequate or not, I'll find out what I can, uh, on our nerves and I'll get back to you.
If anything, um, cause even, cause Harris Teeter has the kiosk, if even if we can get a kiosk, cause you can do, I think, everything at the kiosk, renewing licenses and registration. Even if we can get one of those that like, I don't know, Walmart or something like the way they have it at Harris Teeter, that would probably help a lot too, to cut down the standing.
Okay, I'll do that. Good suggestion, Walter. Next item is consent agenda. Item A, B, and C. Do I have a motion? Have a motion? We have a second to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We move on to old business. That's item A. Consideration and approval to amend the bylaws of the Homelessness Advisory Committee and the Cultural Arts Committee. Who's got the lead?
I'll, I'll take this one. Uh, as you all may recall, uh, there was some discussion at the last meeting about amending some of the bylaws for our subcommittees, uh, to make the board member a liaison and non-voting member and add that seat back to the, uh, western members. We've done that here for the Homeless Advisory Committee and the Cultural Arts Committee because they're pending applications and those were sort of the ones we wanted to address on the front end. Uh, looked through some of the other committee bylaws we have. We're, we're sort of all over the place on how we have these set up. And one of the things I wanted to sort of talk to y'all a little bit about is do we want to continue with that sort of approach of having each committee have its own sort of number of members? And whether we want to have a more holistic, you know, if we have a set policy of each committee has seven members and a liaison? And would we want to have overarching bylaws or do we want to stick with bylaws for each committee? I know each one sort of has it set up differently right now. Uh, for example, the, the Economic Development Committee has three citizens, Mayor Bertin, Town Manager, Court Works Director, and Planning and Economic Services Director. So that sort of is different than how we have the others set up. Um, same with Veterans Affairs. I think we've got, um, that one has, um, that one, I believe does have actually, uh, liaisons appointed. So that one, I think, already has what y'all are looking for, but it's, we have a liaison of, I believe, an employee and a board member is what it has in the bylaws. So I don't know if we want to change that or update that, but. So basically I'm just throwing it open to the board. Do y'all want to sort of keep looking at these as each committee has their own bylaws and their own way of doing it? Do you want to standardize it? What's the problem?
I would not want to standardize. I think that the, especially the Economic Development Committee and the Veterans Committee, it used to be set up where there were different agencies that had a seat on those committees. So I, I don't think overall across the board, I wouldn't want them to be exactly the same.
Mayor Bertin, Dr. McCray, I agree with you. I, and I'll come down to you, Commissioner Swol. I, uh, I agree with you. I think, you know, the committee makeup and the committee bylaws really is going to be dependent on the mission of the committee. What's the objectives of the committee? Uh, and how can they best serve the community, uh, with the membership? So once ours doesn't fit off, but this is just my recommendation, uh, I would think that each committee would operate independently. But I'll, did you have something, Commissioner?
Well, I'm going to probably be coming back at the next meeting asking for additional slots. Because I have, well, with tonight with me stepping off and adding one on, I am a full committee. Um, and, uh, some of them women, their husbands want to join and be with them. Some of the men, their wives want to join. I don't want to stop volunteers from volunteering over not, you know, not having a slot for them to fill and be able to participate in vote numbers. Um, I met with, um, one of the assistant county, um, managers this past week, Heather Skeen, and with Debbie Brown with the Continuum of Care. And they agree with me, the more volunteers we can get, the better it's going to be. And we've worked out something where they said that we should re, try to reinvent the wheel. They've already done that. So by them leading and they're agreeing, they're coming to our meeting tomorrow. They agree that maybe we should follow their leadership and join in and get as many members as we can to, um, to do something. They were even talking about us doing, um, uh, pod communities. And there's a lot of good ideas that they have. And, um, so that I will probably come back in with some more, um, applications to enlarge the homelessness committee.
Yeah, I may just a consideration on that. There's, the more members you have on a committee, the higher the requirement is for quorum. And so if we've got attendance issues, we want to make sure, you know, we're not increasing the quorum requirement beyond where it's, where we're able to have meetings.
I understand that.
And I, and I add, I think, uh, with myself and Tom Turner, we're having conversations in terms of the consistency. I think, is it a way that you can allow the freedom for that committee's bylaws to address the nature of why they exist, but have some consistency on the number of members and the executive members in terms of staff? I think those two could be a base location that would allow all of them to be somewhat uniform, but not so stagnated in a box when you take away a lot of the freedom, as I've received some of the comments.
I just don't want the husband to be on the committee and the wife, um, and she has to sit up to the side and vice versa if they want to be a full-fledged member. Now, if there are other ones that aren't connected by marriage, then I can see us, um, adding VMS executive members, which I think would be great.
Commissioner Lake?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think one reason that we got into changing things is because as the county attorney said, uh, having a quorum available. Most of these people, when they become a member, that's what they want, to become a member. And I don't think they think about what the road ahead looks like and all the work that is involved in it. And I know we couldn't do everything we do without the participation of these volunteers. Um, I for one, and I know I've always spoken most of the move, um, appreciate all those residents for taking a load off our shoulders. So kind of thing are just up in the air sometimes and we have to stop and think about everything. And people like, um, I'm sitting up there with, it takes their time to go to these meetings on off schedule days, um, from the mayor right on down to me. Uh, but I think that, that it should be explained to them what it takes to be a member besides a name tag. A lot more, a lot more to it. Thank you, Commissioner Mayor.
Commissioner Lake, Mayor Bertin, Dr. McCray.
Uh, the only thing I would like to just say, the commissioner, uh, favor was that, you know, again, it doesn't stop anybody from being a volunteer. They can do everything but vote. And I would, like Commissioner Lake said, I would probably go that route first and not expand my committee because I, you know, at first people get excited and they want to do it and then I'm not saying that's what might happen. But then if it fails out and all these people stop showing up, then you don't have a more physical forum. But you definitely can do everything but vote, as a volunteer, they can do whatever else they want to do on the committee but vote. Uh, so that, I mean, it's going to be up to you, Commissioner Lake, but I would, I would be cautious about adding, um, additional seats. But again, it's just, it's up to you.
Thank you, Dr. McCray. But you know, I want to echo that because that's what happened to the Veterans Affairs Committee. We had the liaisons and it was really robust and a working committee for a long time. And then the liaisons start to stop coming. And then now we're to a point where it doesn't meet because we don't have enough members for four. Anyway, do you have a motion that we approve to amend the bylaws of the Homelessness Advisory Committee and the Cultural Arts Committee?
Just clarify on, on these two, I believe these are the only two bylaws that had board members as community members, voting committee members. So the rest, I believe, had only liaisons. Is there another one? Well, prime movers, we, you know, we talked about, um, but I believe the prime movers, the economic development, uh, but as, as y'all said, that one might be slightly different. So yeah, you're right. Economic development community does have board members and prime movers might as well. But I, I believe those were intentionally set that way. So we could change that if you want, but it's up to them.
You could, we, uh, right now, but like, uh, it's not that many of us on the problem, but I probably need to pay them some more stuff right now.
Okay, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Item B, appointment of Christopher Craig to the Homelessness Advisory Committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Christopher Craig to the Homelessness Advisory Committee, as I'm today.
You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Congratulations, Christopher, as a new member of the Homelessness Advisory Committee. We now move into new business and this is item seven. Uh, item A, approval of resolution R twenty twenty five dash zero zero seven Heritage Park Art Grant Submission. And that resolution is under tab eight and it's well detailed. Chancellor?
Um, we are gearing up for the submission of the product grant for phase two Heritage Park as outlined in this resolution. This is the resolution that is required, um, with the submission of the grant. Um, and like I said, outline this is related to the phase two, which is the playground, outdoor classroom, picnic shelter. Um, we have, uh, granted this resolution in the past for, uh, phase one and this is part of the process.
Okay. May I just make a mention, we approved resolution R twenty twenty five dash.
Do we have a second? Do we have any discussion? Okay.
I went to, I went down to Heritage Park, uh, it was about a week ago. And, uh, I don't know if you've been back there recently, but people are already trying to cut trails. And I'm sure it's not a good thing, but it, it was very nice that you could walk very nice to, uh, very close to the water back there. But, um, I'm looking forward to it when it actually gets built out a little bit further because, uh, the, the, to hear the water, you couldn't even hear the traffic because you were so close to that water running.
This is, I always peg the, the lake is, if you want to fish, um, concert in the gazebo and get something here, big teeth. But if you want that more tranquil experience, I left Oakland Bay, uh, I took my daughter down to Heritage Park and we just sat there for hours. Um, I do love what they have planned for phase two with the natural trails and things that I mentioned. So, um, this is something I think will be, it's going to have expanded parking as well. And so I did think this would be a nice, uh, cherry on top of what we've already accomplished with the church.
What's going on down there Saturday? I saw blue tents and a lot of people down there. Was there some kind of event?
Wasn't it an event sponsored by us? It could have been just people down there. I was down there for about an hour and a half.
I think it was the same kind of chill down there. I mean, I thought you and your daughter had been there and they were over on the grass this time. We played pool balls and this is just rest that's going to get rid of that outside.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor. Before I go for the vote, I want to share a comment. And I heard it this morning on the stage at the Cape Fear Regional Theater, Ralph Lee. There were a number of speakers on the stage. Cumberland County Chairman, Kurt Devier, was one of them. But Ralph and Linda Hutt said it probably the best. And I'm going, I'm going to say, I'm, I'm going to share what their comment was. And I want, we can relate that to Heritage Park. He said this, "When we build, we build for future generations." And the impact that that building and that endeavor has on the community and forward generations. And, and that really resonated with me when he said that because you know what? He's spot on. He is totally spot on with that comment. When we build, we build for future generations. The same is true for the Cape Fear Regional Theater. It is true for the phase two of Heritage Park. And it's also true for anything else that we build in Oak Mills. And I probably, we can expand that across our great county. We build for future generations. So I just wanted to share that, that comment. Go ahead.
Before I forget, um, I was still hearing, people still have suggestions. Are you still taking suggestions for what to include in the phase two of Heritage Park?
I think the master plan, uh, was completed from the very beginning. I think they're just, um, completing phase two. However, we have been engaged with someone, uh, from a historical context. So I do know that, um, there are ideas that we're coming up with with, uh, in respect to incorporating more historical markers. Um, but if there's any additional ideas, I know you might be probably going to throw something at me. I committed this, but I, I don't see anything wrong with someone, uh, bringing something to our attention that we may be able to incorporate, especially if it's something about.
I agree.
Off the top of my head, it was, it, it came to my head while this, um, young lady was talking about literacy and the gentleman was talking about the book program. If you look around town, a lot of these neighborhoods have the little free libraries.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's.
And I'm like, y'all, it would be a perfect spot for maybe having free books. Cause I'm like, I'm sitting down there, I was like, really? I have my cell phone, but a book would be.
I think that's something that's definitely beautiful, especially if one of the portions of phase two is outdoor classroom. I think that would be very well.
Just a suggestion, just going out there.
Don't they have a, a, a input meeting next Thursday? Is that not an input?
That would be a perfect time for that person to come and I'll bring it up then. Um, but we do have an input meeting coming up.
I was getting ready to share the very same thing. And this is another opportunity for the community to voice and be a part of the engagement. I do know that we're. I do know that we're looking at putting the, uh, the bell tower down there for the bell that came out of the gazebo. I know that, that is one. And just now, the master plan was, was, uh, put together some years ago. And it could, it can be amended and upgraded, you know, depending on what we want to put there. Because it's our part, and the community can, has the opportunity to weigh in. Okay, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Item B, acceptance of firehouse subs grant and corresponding approval of budget amendment number twenty-eight in the amount of eighteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars under tab nine. Who's got this one?
I can let Keith, uh, go into what the grant's actually going to cover, but the budget amendment is cash, but we're receiving eighteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars for different equipment for the police department for the firehouse sub stream.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
There's a, sorry, there's a, on one part it says six oh five, but another part says six twenty-five.
Right. If you remember, budget amendments need to be a little bit more than what you're actually spending, but you can't go over. Always round to the highest quarter of a dollar. So if it's six oh five, the budget amendment is going to be six twenty-five.
Well, I'll make that motion with six oh five, I have said, grant corresponding approval of budget amendment hundred twenty-eight in the amount of eighteen, six, twenty-five.
Second. Do we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. We move on to item C.
Hold on.
Oops. What's that?
Go ahead.
Oh, oh, I mean, we're holding on. Approval of resolution R twenty twenty-five dash zero zero eight declaring certain property of the town to be surplus and authorizing the disposition of said property and corresponding approval of budget amendment number twenty-nine in the amount of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's under tab ten. Chief?
So when the, the building was originally built in the records room there, the back of it were those, uh, kind of like you said, the doctor's office, the rolling shelves for files. Um, since then, we've digitized, so we, we have no need for them. Um, that room is going to be where we put the twenty-four hour day operation, if, if we're lucky to do that. And we'll be able to monitor all the, the security cameras and stuff from there. The, we asked all the department heads in the town if they had a need for the shelf, they did not. Um, so they have built police departments in, so, um, and they're very good to us. They just gave us, uh, thousands of dollars of equipment that they were surplus. And so we have a group of relationships where if they can help us out, they do, if we help them out, they do. So, uh, their shelf, those shelters are, they have used for them.
Geez, I'm glad to see that they went to the, to the city. Because this is another opportunity of, of cooperation and partnership between municipalities. And they have, they really tremendously give a lot to you and.
Sure do, yeah. And they came, I mean, their, their employees came and took them down, removed them, so they, they did all the work as well. Yes, sir. Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Mayor, I'd like to make sure to include surplus item resolution for disposal of twists and budget amendment hundred twenty-nine for twenty-one, twelve, twenty-five.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Move on to item D, which is acceptance of the Wilt O'Brien quarterly report, and that's under tab eleven.
Thank you, I'll briefly speak to this. Um, this is our quarterly grant update that we received outlining the amount of funds that we've spent and the status of the grants submitted. Um, the latest cycle was approved for thirty thousand available hours if they were second. We have a balance of about twenty-four thousand left of that. If you scroll down, um, it does provide you with, um, the amount that we have awarded the U.S. Department of Transportation, Safe Streets, all firehouse subs, the brick grant, um, that we received, uh, imitation before, that was two point two million. And we currently have four grants submitted and four additional grants in progress. Um, I think I gave them another, uh, grant tied to Austin Clutchers who began researching on. So this is a constant thing. We, we, we meet with them, uh, pretty regularly, about every two weeks. Um, and so some of these grants, we are waiting to hear back from, the grants submitted from the Cannon Foundation, assistance to firefighting grant, the Garrisoni Foundation, and the, uh, Governor's Highway Safety Program. We're waiting to hear back from those, hoping for approvals. Um, and then we have four more in progress that we're actually gearing up to. One of which is the product grant that you just put the residential report.
Thank you, Chancellor. I will look at the comments from the board. We'll start off with Commissioner Lake. Okay.
The League of Municipalities paid for part of this, the first.
The League of Municipalities paid for the first thirty thousand available hours, and that was last year. Um, I think we're on our second cycle of paying for our own thirty thousand.
And so that's what we owe now, is what we have to pay them, is twenty-four thousand.
That's right. That, that's the way, the twenty-four thousand is what we have left available hours to spend.
I do have one more question when I was looking at this. Why are we looking or spending money for research to Lakeview Big Bridge removal?
Um, what, Don can speak to that. That's not the Lakeview Bridge as it relates to the roadway, um, that is tied to the bridge that was over the flume at the time we were looking at that. But Don can give you some of that.
With that, you can understand when people read this and my phone starts ringing, what are they going to do with the bridge? How are we going to get rid of the lake? So I want to make sure that that was explained, read on.
The easy part is, what most folks don't realize, there are two bridges on Lakeview Road. They are both assigned numbers by the NCDOT, and we are required to maintain both bridges. One of them is the one that goes over the flume. It is a functional bridge, but it is not operational. There's no need for it, uh, but we still have to maintain it. But one of the things we asked Wilt O'Brien to do was do some research and see if there was any infrastructure monies associated with removing obsolete infrastructure structures. So that, that's why that came up on, on the bill.
We remember the days that bridges were thought of.
Yeah, it was just with small groups.
We drove around, I like, we, we, they, um, was, is there any major problem with it?
No, if there isn't a major problem with it, other than we're all spending money to maintain it, and it doesn't do anything. The flume that was over the flume did have to do that.
It seems to me like, if we're paying to care now, how much are we paying VMT?
Right now, right now, we're doing well on the bridge maintenance. We had to do a little bit of guardrail maintenance two years ago. But other than that, it's just your standard street maintenance type of things. But as, as we get our inspections, the bridge inspection is required every two years. And over the eleven years that I've been with you, you can see that the condition is just getting a little bit less good, a little bit less good. And it's getting to the point now that we're going to look at hiring an engineer to take that inspection report from the state, figure out what are we going to need to bring that back up to a, a hay-raised grid? And then do our process, then, then do the, uh, the oversight for it, so we can get that worked up. And it all, bridge work is very expensive. So the reason that we, that's why we looked at, at eliminating the one over the flume that served no purpose. And if we would have been able to get grant funding to eliminate it, it would have been beneficial and plus save to the town.
Don, do you have an estimate on what it's going to cost?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lake, Commissioner Craver, Commissioner Schueller. You good? Any other commissioners?
The hunters are set, we're going to try, I'm trying to support the report.
Thank you, Don. No further discussion. All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. I am see consideration and approval of the twenty twenty-five sales distribution interlocal agreement with Cumberland County, that's under tab twelve. Drew?
Yes, this is the, um, amended contract from the county for the sales tax distribution. As you know, since two thousand three, the county, um, changes, will, will be changing how they calculate and distribute the sales tax to the towns. They're switching from Purvi to Edelorm. In the meantime, I think that agreement was in two thousand twenty-three. In the meantime, for fiscal years twenty-four and twenty-five, we have to give the county any excess that we make in sales tax distribution over the fiscal year twenty-two amount. So we did that last year. Um, they're offering in this agreement for the fiscal year twenty-five that we don't have to give them that full amount of what had the sales tax that we received in two thousand twenty-five over the two thousand twenty-two amount as the split fifty-fifty. So for instance, last year, the difference between our sales tax revenue, um, that we received last year and what we got in two thousand twenty-two, that difference went to the county. It was about three hundred and eleven thousand dollars that we had to give back to the county from our sales tax revenue. But this agreement does is, this year's sales tax is about the same thing. So instead of giving the county three hundred and eleven thousand, we would keep one hundred and fifty-five thousand and just give them another one hundred and fifty-five thousand. So we keep half of it. So our recommendation is to approve this sales tax distribution. Now, payable and spring late have to approve it as well, and there's also a problem in there that payable has to pay their last year's income. Hopefully they'll do that, and we can go forward with this agreement, but we have to approve it ourselves.
Thank you, Drew. I want to highlight that this is another example of the collaboration and partnership between the municipalities and Cumberland County Board of Commissioners. As we move into Avalon, which is coming up, that will affect all municipalities in the future budget year. This is a, a nice offering, a very generous offering, to minimize some of that loss of sales tax revenue by the county. And I would like to say that there was a lot of discussion, a lot of debate, a lot of input that went back and forth. And our chairman, Kurt Devier, is here to answer any questions that the board may have or anyone else may have about this agreement. Because it's something that, that's very generous from the county, and I applaud him and the leadership of the Board of Commissioners for drafting up this interlocal agreement and presenting it to all municipalities. I really, really do. Because every dollar counts, and as we are looking forward into next year with the loss of the sales tax revenue, it's a great opportunity for the county to extend something to the municipalities to, to help ease that loss of revenue. So I just wanted to go on the record and say that. And thank Cumberland County Board of Commissioners for offering this interlocal agreement to the municipalities. And Chairman Devier, thanks for your leadership to do this, sir. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussions? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Drew, clearment. Okay. Item, uh, item eight, closed session.
Entertaining motion to conduct the closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven A three to consult with attorney on matters within attorney-client privilege and to conduct the closed session pursuant to NCGS one four three three eighteen eleven A six to discuss personnel matters and to conduct the closed session pursuant to ASBGS one four three three eight seven eleven A five to establish instructor help by staff, order, routine, agents concerning the position to be taken concerning the acquisition of real property.
Have a motion, have a second? All in favor? Seeing none opposed, we're going into closed session, and we'll be back shortly.